My pleasure, lesions.
The pleasure.
The United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stay there, boys. A couple of weeks ago, I had an opportunity to act as a judge for the Pinewood Derby for PAC 36. These three young men, Henry Gorskowski, David Berry, and Andrew Guzman, were the first, second, and third place winners. You guys want to go back and get your trophies and come forward with your trophies? And when I say the first, second, and third, Henry was number one, which means he had the fastest car. And on multiple races, he came out number one, David came out number two, and Andrew came out number three. And those cars got up to a speed of seventy something miles an hour going down that track. So, guys, I like you to...
Take a picture with Mayor behind you. He's going to come behind you.
Join you?
Those are some Phila control there, the cars.
And they have their cars.
I guess we're going to turn this way.
Yes, if it's okay.
Okay.
One more. Wonderful.
And I have one of our city of Darien pins for each one. Are you okay? Put this on your uniform. And again, guys, congratulations. He wants to give a speech. And I want to thank their parents for the support. Thank you for bringing them in tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, can we have our roll call, please?
Belzak.
Here.
Gustafson.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Vaughn.
Here.
Sullivan.
Here.
Kenny.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to present to the council tonight that necessarily doesn't deal with our agenda? No one? Takes us to approval of the minutes. I like a motion and a second to approve the council minutes of January seventeenth, 2022. Moved by Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Shower. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Kenny.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Now I need a motion and a second to approve the February seventh, 2022 minutes. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The minutes of February seventh have been approved. It takes us to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications they want to share with the council? Alderman Kenny.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a communication from Marcia Carrello on Gold Grove regarding her sump pump discharge. There was an issue with the rear yard drainage. That AT&T had been through their property with, and the easements digging. And all of a sudden, now they're having some problems with their sump pump. We did put that through to municipal services. And then our own Bonnie Casera had had some questions about garbage, which have been answered. And that's all I had tonight, sir. Thank you.
Anything else? Alderman Clistic.
Thank you, Mayor. I received a communication from Mr. Jerry Legansky from the 8,000 block of Farmdale on behalf of the residents in his area. The power went out once again. I have reached out to ComEd and let them know. And just, I just want to make sure that Ryan knows. We'll stay on ComEd. Unfortunately, we lose power way too often, so.
Thank you.
How long was that?
Five minutes. So.
Alderman Gustafson.
Yeah, I had a communication from a resident at 2441 Green Valley regarding water accumulating on the Nykor property behind their home. I did a site visit on the twenty-first and then again on the twenty-second with the residents. And then today, I just discussed the issue with Dan. So we're in good shape on that one.
Okay. Anything else? If not, that takes us to our mayor's report. I'm very happy to present to you our Darien Citizen of the Year for 2022. And you can give me a few minutes here because we have quite a long resolution to read. Whereas Lou Mallers has been a resident of Darien since 1989. And whereas Lou and Carol are parents to Jeff and daughter-in-law Carmen, they are proud grandparents to Kendall and Cullen. Whereas Lou Mallers honorably served in the Army Reserves. And where Lou Mallers has spent his entire career working in the financial sector of mortgage and banking, watching over homeowners. He is a member of the Illinois Mortgage Bankers Association and has proudly served to the elected position of president. Lou served on the advisory board of the Illinois Housing Development Authority and Roosevelt University's Marshall Bennett Institute of Real Estate. He volunteered from 1999 to 2000 for Chicago's Habitat for Humanity. Lou is currently the vice president of business development at Compass Mortgage. And whereas Lou Mallers became a member of the Darien Lions Club in 1990 after sponsorship by then Lion El Barovia. Lou has served on a variety of committees that positively impacted our community. These committees included the Fourth of July Parade, Candy Day, Darien Fest, the Halloween Party, and the Food Baskets Committee. Lou can be counted on to help plan, show up, and share his time to bring together, bring people together in a spirit of giving. He has assisted with the Lions Club Foundation Flag Program, chaired the annual golf outing, and ensured no one went hungry at the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast. More recently, Lou participated in Darien's Remembrance of 9/11 to honor our veterans and service personnel. Whenever Lou is asked, he cheerfully steps up to make sure things happen. And whereas a nominator said, "His smile and style makes you want to be on his service team and do more for your community." And whereas for the past ten years, Lou has served on the Our Lady of Mount Carmel Parish Council as Service Commissioner, he is head usher for the 10:00 AM Sunday Mass. Lou is responsible for the St. Vincent de Paul Clothing Drive, holiday food and toy collections, food pantry, and PADS public action to deliver shelter. For these events, Lou coordinates volunteers to carry out tasks. He's especially passionate about St. Vincent de Paul Clothing Drive, and he is known for showing up at all hours to check on items left outside the truck stationed in the OLMC parking lot to ensure donations are not misplaced or damaged in inclement weather. He is also instrumental in setting up the nativity scene in front of the church. And whereas for the past fifteen years, Lou has been serving as president of the Pinehurst Homers Association to assist in developing a sense of community. Lou's ongoing spirit of helping others was demonstrated when the tornado ripped through the Pinehurst subdivision on June twentieth, 2021. He lost no time mobilizing the troops and getting started on the cleanup efforts in the neighborhood. Lou's kind nature and offering encouragement throughout the relief efforts spoke so proudly of neighbor helping neighbor during such tough times. A quote by Shannon A. Alder, "One of the most important things you can do on this earth is to let people know they are not alone." And whereas Lou also volunteers for the city of Darien in two capacities. He was appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2012 by then-mayor Kathy Weaver and continues to serve on that committee today. When Mayor Joseph Marquez took office, he established the Economic Development Committee and appointed Lou as a committee member. Whereas in 2016, Lou was appointed to serve on the Citizens Referendum Advisory Committee for District 86. And whereas a nominator states, "When I reflect on all the incredible individuals whose portraits graced the Citizen of the Year recognition wall in City Hall, I believe Lou Mallers is another to stand out who deserves recognition." His longtime and continued dedication to our community is stellar. He is a natural leader that captivates the essence of community service. No matter where you turn, there is Lou rolling up his sleeves, working hard to better our community. And whereas in his free time, Lou likes to golf and go on walks with Carol. They enjoy their time in their home in Galena. The best time for both of them, though, is traveling near and far, cheering on their granddaughter Kendall at her school, and swim meets, and grandson Cullen at his club hockey games. Quote from Leo Christopher, "There's only one thing more precious than our time, and that's who we spend, spend it on." And whereas another nominator states, "A shining star is something that we all need in our lives. A star can guide us to a place we need to be, a place where we can discover our gifts and how we can use those gifts to better ourselves and make the world a little better for others." Lou Mallers is that shining star in our community. From his Lions Club activities, city commitments, neighborhood association, and parish board duties, he has shared his time and talent to make Darien a nice place to live. And whereas Lou is and will continue to be one of the many shining stars in Darien, making Darien a nice place to live. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Darien, DuPage County, Illinois, that Lou Mallers be hereby designated the 2022 Citizen of the Year for the city of Darien in recognition of his many years of dedicated service to the city and to its residents. Motion to approve. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. And the roll.
Shower.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Kenny.
Aye.
Regona.
Aye.
Treasure Corin.
Aye.
Attorney Murphy.
Aye.
Administrator Vanna.
Aye.
Twelve ayes.
And me.
Oh, I'm sorry. And Mayor Marquez.
Lou, you want to come forward? I'm going to come down there, and I'm going to be an Indian giver. I'm going to give you two things you got to give back to me. Joshua, congratulations.
You turn the plaque around, Bo. You turn the plaque around. I'll invite it. A couple people want to take questions.
I always kid Lou that he has a picture of Dorian Gray in his hat of cages. He doesn't.
One more. Can Carol come up, please?
Carol? You with Lou. Carol, do you hold?
Yes, that'd be wonderful.
You don't have to be worried about it. You can get it.
You get in there too, Mayor. Sorry. Wonderful.
No, I just, you know, when Bonnie called me and asked me a question, I kind of said, "What? You got to be kidding me?" Didn't expect this. I'm just flattered. I'm pleased. Just everybody's been great. I've got to thank my partner in crime, Carol. She's led me down the straight and narrow. If I went this way, she may be come back this way, so. Thanks, see. Appreciate it. And thank you to everybody. Thank you for those individuals that said some nice things about me in the letters. I really appreciate it. And wow, just looking forward to doing what I can do. So, thank you.
I have one other item. On a sad note, the city of Darien lost a very special lady the other day. Kathy Minardi. A number of you might remember Kathy was one of our Heart of Darien Award winners last year. Last few years of her life, she suffered from ALS and became progressive over the years. Kathy was a very special person. When I was alderman of Ward Five, we had an issue with people on Carriage Greens going out onto the golf course and damaging the golf course. And at that time, the management talked about putting a fence up all around Carriage Greens between the homes and the golf course. And Kathy gave me a call, and she says, "This can't happen." And we rallied 350 people to show up at Carriage Greens. We had the management of Carriage Greens there. Bob Pavlichek, who was the chief of police at the time, was there. And we managed to convince Mr. Broderick and the management not to put that fence up that the parents, the people who lived on the golf course, would patrol the golf course and would, we'd catch the culprits, and we did. We caught the children, unfortunately, who were responsible for doing it. But Kathy led that charge. But she's even better known for Arbor Day. And I don't think there'd be an Arbor Day in the city of Darien if it wasn't for Kathy Minardi. She was visible at every one of them. In fact, a couple of years ago, you know, still confined to the wheelchair, unable to talk, she was there. And just a sweet lady. You know, over the last couple of weeks, we've lost Elmer Kalney, who was one of our founding fathers. And now we've lost Kathy Minardi, who by far was one of our special, special Darien residents. Kathy will be, will have a viewing at Modell Funeral Home tomorrow between, I believe, 3:00 and 8:00 PM. And I believe the mass for Kathy will take place Thursday at Our Lady of Mount Carmel. I'm not sure what time.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty. So, a good lady and a real friend. And as her husband Mike told me, and he sent me an email the other day, is he said, "Joe," he said, "she really, really loved the city of Darien." And you can't ask anything more from a resident than to love the city. I get a little choked up because Kathy was that kind of person, and I think that needs to be acknowledged. So I think all of us, if you get a chance, go pay tribute to Kathy Minardi. And with that, I'm done with my mayor's report. Take you to the city's clerk's report. Joanne?
No report this evening. Thank you.
City administrator's report?
No report, Mayor.
Anything from our police department or municipal services?
I have nothing.
Any questions for Dan or Eric?
I just have a couple of things. One for Dan. I just wanted to have him thank his staff for the great job in fixing the large water main break on Green Valley and Wakefield on Monday. And I visited the site a few times throughout today, and was amazed at the amount of work and the dedication skill set of your team. They really did a great job. They had, they had a tough job.
Yeah, appreciate that. Believe it or not, after that, after they got completed with that one, they had to respond to another one, which was a fire hydrant leak that needed urgent remediation. So they didn't get home till probably 2:00 o'clock in the next morning, or yesterday, this morning, excuse me.
In my understanding, this was a plastic pipe.
Correct, correct.
Do we have a lot of that?
No, it's very limited. And again, you know, plastic pipe, I've never been a fan of. And I think that the department is not a fan of them either, for various reasons.
Anything else, Eric?
I just have something for the police chief. And I saw the last police report, there were three more catalytic converter thefts. And I had your staff provide me the automobile models. And one was a 2022 Honda Accord, a 2019 Mitsubishi Outlander, and a 2008 Honda CRV. So it seems like they're going after all types of cars. And I don't know if there's, and I tried Googling this and tried to find out, is there any way to prevent it? I mean, some people put like a cage around, around the actual device in the car. Some people, you know, tried the spray painting, which we talked about before. But I don't know if you have any thoughts on this. I mean, we're getting to a point where, you know, residents, if they can't park the vehicle inside the house, they're really stuck.
I agree. On February eleventh, we received a phone call of a theft in progress of catalytic converters. Officers responded and gave a little bit of vehicle chase and a foot chase and spike stripped the car tires and were able to capture the three people. There, I believe, all three were out of Chicago. They were nineteen, twenty, and twenty-three, I believe. One of the good things is intelligence-led policing. One of the caveats is about 6% of the population is responsible for 60% of the thefts. So catching people is one good way of controlling that. The next day, LIO Police Department caught two more individuals. So your point, Alderman, is well taken. Catching offenders is great, prosecuting them is good. But it's a lot better to prevent them and not have them happen in the first place. And some of the things we talked about before with parking near a curb, parking in a well-lit area, as you said, parking in the garage, sometimes those things aren't possible.
Yeah.
So as before, you talked about painting them. We contacted a couple of the agencies that were painting them. They felt it was a good PR program, but not so much in actual prevention. Now, they do make some catalytic converters out of ceramic and some other parts. And maybe when we stop building them with some of the precious metals that they're used, then it'll probably go away.
Yeah, and I think people need to realize, you know, your auto insurance may or may not pay for the replacement converter. Depends upon the actual type of insurance. So that's something that people, you know, if you're keeping your vehicle outside, I would check your insurance to see if you are covered because it can be pretty costly if you got to fund it for yourself.
Yes.
Quick question. Since they were able to catch three of them, were detectives able to go follow the path where they get rid of the catalytic converters and see where they sell them and further up the food chain to sort of stop that flow?
That's always, you know, our, one of the things that we want to do is find those things out. These individuals are well-versed in the criminal law and probably responsible for many other, the vehicle that they came out with was stolen. It had been stolen for probably three weeks. Tracking it, tracking that car through LPR and stuff, we know that they were responsible for others. So the, trying to work through that process of where they're getting rid of them was not fruitful.
What's the sentencing like on these guys? I mean, they going to serve any time? Or is it just a slap on the wrist and they're back out at it again? is it just a slap on the wrist and they're back out at it again?
Well, I think State's Attorney Berlin is very good with doing these prosecutions. They're charged with multiple felonies, so I believe that they're going to get a fairly significant spanking for it.
Okay. Brian, you want to say something? Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. I've had this discussion with the chief before, but I thought it was good to get it out into the open. I've had discussions with some friends of mine regarding the, whether to hang on to your landline, or if cell phones are sufficient nowadays in terms of calling 911, and if it's better to have a landline, do you get quicker response by using your landline by calling 911 as opposed to a cellphone, which I think was the situation in the past. The chief has told me that that's probably changed, so I guess I'd just like him to address that a little bit, so the public can be aware of as they're making these decisions.
Certainly, the, about, almost 90%, it was like 87% of phone calls into the 911 center come through a cellphone. So, very few people have landlines, and it's going away more and more. You don't really get a quicker response as much as the dial 911 is going to call and make that connection at the same rate. Where there's a better means of using a landline versus cellphone is being able to identify where you're at. And when you call from a landline, that landline, we know where that phone is, and we know where to send the police to, or fire, or EMS. In a cellphone, it was very hard to track sometimes. You had to have three positions and cell towers in order to triangulate where they're at. A lot of that technology has improved, and so on a call to the police, and you can't get that location, we can get that location through the cellphone and, as well as the landline. One of the things that we were discussing earlier was what's going to happen when you call 911, and the first thing they're always going to ask, regardless across the nation when you call, the first thing they're going to ask is where you're at. So, you know, I think people want to go right into, you know, this is happening, and there's the offender, and this is, the person's bleeding. It's all good things to know, but we can't help you if we don't know where you're at. So, first thing on 911 etiquette is get the location. Because then we can always get there. We can send the people that we need to, and we'll fill in the blanks afterwards, but that location is just so important.
Thanks, Greg. That takes us to our treasury report. We have a warrant tonight, warrant 212220. Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as you indicated, this evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 212220 in the amount of $434,738.08 from the listed funds. As well as payroll for the period ended February 10th, in the amount of $278,874.39, for a total to be approved of $713,604.47.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Vaughn. Questions or comments? None, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
That takes us to our monthly report. Mike?
Okay, the monthly report for the nine months ended January 31st reflects general fund year-to-date revenue of $14,085,375, expenses of $10,397,699, current balance of $6,249,137. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $5,544,506, expenses of $5,287,984, current balance of $3,859,485. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $921,744, expenses of $1,464,736, current balance of $823,332. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $1,431, expenses of $180,838, current balance of $2,915,962. And the capital improvement fund, $1,987,317, year-to-date revenue and expenses of $1,587,204, for current balance of $10,414,499.
Thank you, Mike. Takes us to standing committee reports. Then the aldermen have reports to provide the council. Mary?
As for the Citizen of the Year Committee, we are thrilled to honor our new Citizen of the Year, Lou Mallers, tonight with a cake reception across the parking lot in City Hall immediately following the meeting. And tomorrow, Tuesday, I'm sorry, today's Tuesday, Wednesday, February 23rd, is the last day to make your reservation for the celebratory dinner dance honoring Lou Mallers, which will be held on Friday, March 4th, at Alpine Bakewitz at 6:00 p.m. Encourage the community to come out and celebrate our Citizen of the Year tonight and on March 4th. Once again, the deadline for the reservations for the dinner dance is tomorrow at City Hall, February 23rd. Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Budget workshop that will be starting tomorrow, Wednesday, the 23rd, here in council chambers at 6:30 p.m. is our first of a series of workshops. The amount we will have will depend on how quickly we get through the material. Our second one, which will for sure happen, will be the following week, Tuesday, March 1st. The material and the proposed fiscal year '23 budget is on the city website.
Thank you. Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next Municipal Services Committee meeting is scheduled for next Monday, February 28. It'll be at 6:00 p.m., and it will be in council chambers.
Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we, the police committee met. We have minutes for the clerk's office. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March 21st, 2022, at 6:00 p.m., pending agenda items.
Just a reminder, the new committee, the Darien Action Committee, which is comprised of 25 community groups working together, will meet again for the third time on Saturday, March 12th, at the Indian Prairie Public Library from 10:00 to 12:00 noon. Mary?
One more. The Economic Development Committee will meet next Thursday, March 3rd, at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers at City Hall.
Thank you. Questions and comments, agenda-related? Anybody in the audience have any questions based on, in items on our agenda? If none, it takes us to old business. There being none, during our workshop session, we moved our three new business items to the consent agenda. Items A, B, and C under new business are now A, B, and C under the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve two electronic waste, e-waste home collection events during 2022, as provided in the contract between the city of Darien and LRS. Item B, consideration of motion to approve an ordinance authorizing the sale of personal property owned by the city of Darien. And item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 and the city of Darien, authorizing a school resource officer services for the school year 2022, 2023. Motion to approve. Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny, and the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Vaughn?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Consent agenda's been approved. There's no new business. It takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any, does anybody there from the audience or from the council have anything they'd like to share? Alderman Sullivan?
I'm thrilled to announce that Hinsdale South High School's speech team achieved a first in the school's history and won the IHSA State Speech Tournament this past weekend in Peoria, the first time in its history. And they also had many individual awards in the first, second, and fourth place category. So, it's a huge accomplishment for the school, and we are all thrilled for them and the community as well. And another Hinsdale South announcement, the Booster Club is hosting a trivia night this Friday, February 25th. The in-person event is sold out, but there will be an online auction that will be available tomorrow. The ad information can be found on hinsdellsouthboosters.org. And it also will be in the weekly direct connect from the city of Darien. And all the money raised for this event goes directly back to the school community through grants and scholarships.
Thank you, Mary. Alderman Gustafson?
Yeah, I mentioned this last meeting, I'm going to mention it again, regarding Sinner Cast District 66, just encouraging people to get involved since there's a potential material increase in taxes that is coming, anywhere from $500 to $700 per year per household increase. So, people just need to, there's going to be additional meetings set up, so just get involved. Make sure your vote counts.
Anything else? If nothing, motion to adjourn. Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Kennedy, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned at 8:04. Thank you, everybody. Go have your cake and coffee.
Head over to the police station.